Council come to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, please call the roll.
De Young. Branderhorst, here. Dan Struck.
Here.
Ski Bow.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Spoor.
Here.
So if you are attending via the telephone, you will be able to provide verbal comments during your dedicated public forums and public hearings. I would just ask that you keep your microphones or telephones on mute until the time at which you wish to speak. Can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Banstra, Branderhorst, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Struck.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Ski Bow.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Motion passed. I have a few appointments to go through here. So I recommend reappointment of Kevin Gall to the South Central Regional Airport Agency. Kevin has been a member of this board since 2018 and attended all meetings held in the last year. If reappointed, Kevin's new term would expire on December 1, 2024. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Spoor.
Hopkins, spoor, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Dan Struck.
Yes.
Ski Bow.
Motion passed. I recommend reappointment of Jackie Nunikovin to the Board of Adjustments as a representative from the Hask County Extraterritorial Jurisdiction. The Board of Supervisors have approved this reappointment. Jackie has served on the board since 2020 and attended all meetings held in the last year. If approved, Jackie's new term would expire on January 1, 2027. Can I get a motion for approval?
Spoor.
Hopkins, spoor, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Dan Struck.
Yes.
Ski Bow.
Motion passed. I recommend reappointment of Mike Vanderwork to the Board of Adjustment. Mike has served on the board since 2007 and attended three of the four meetings held in the last year. If approved, Mike's new term would expire on January 1, 2027. Can I get a motion for approval?
Spoor.
De Young.
Spoor.
De Young, Branderhorst. Are you new at this?
Got to help me along.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
De Young.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Dan Struck.
Yes.
Ski Bow.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
Motion passed. I recommend reappointment of Bruce Borchee to the Historical Preservation Commission. Bruce has served on the commission since 2019 and attended all meetings held in the last year. If approved, Bruce's new term would expire on January 1, 2025. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Banstra, or no, Branderhorst Banstra. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Dan Struck.
Yes.
Ski Bow.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Motion passed. I recommend reappointment of Don Andre to the Historical Preservation Commission. Don has served on the commission since 2019 and attended all meetings held in the last year. If approved, Don's new term would expire on January 1, 2025. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Ski Bow, Banstra, discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Ski Bow.
Yes.
Dan Struck.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Motion passed. I recommend appointment of Lorinda Bradley to fill a vacancy on the Historic Preservation Commission. Lorinda recently moved back to Pella with her husband after completing her PhD in art history and archaeology, specializing in American architecture and design. Lorinda and her husband own one of the earlier homes built in Pella. She has enjoyed researching its history while working on home renovations. If approved, Lorinda would assume the remainder of the vacant term, which expires on January 1, 2024. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Spoor.
Branderhorst, Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Dan Struck.
Yes.
Ski Bow.
Yes.
Motion passed. One to go. I recommend appointment of Trevor Nickle to fill a vacancy on the Airport Committee. Trevor is currently employed as the Chief of Aviation Maintenance at Pella Corporation. Trevor received his pilot ratings, licenses through Classic Aviation, enjoys flying in his free time. He resides in Sully. If approved, Trevor would assume the remainder of the vacant term, which expires on January 1, 2026. Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
Ski Bow, Banstra, discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Ski Bow.
Yes.
Dan Struck.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Motion passed. All right, it's time for a public forum, so anyone wishing to address council regarding any agenda item, if you want to comment on an agenda item, come to the microphone, please state your name and address. Try to limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved. Spoor.
Branderhorst, spoor, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Dan Struck.
Yes.
Ski Bow.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Motion passed. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution number 6369 entitled Resolution Approving and Authorizing Execution of a Third Amendment to the Agreement for Private Development By and Between the City of Pella and South Main LLC. Mike?
Ladies and Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item for those following at home. I'm on slide number three tonight. As Mayor Duarte stated, what we're entertaining tonight is approval of the Third Amendment for the South Main Development. It's very important to note the terms that we will be discussing tonight and that are being proposed are the exact same terms that we discussed during policy and planning on November 16. Now, it's very important to note that this amendment pertains to the future phase of the South Main Development and it's really being driven by market conditions by the developer. Now specifically, what the developer is proposing for Phase Two of the development is to build six new single-family attached housing units, so there'd be three new buildings for the development on there. So overall, there's 18 that's been constructed to date on the South Main site. Six additional brings us up to 24. In addition, it is important to note that the developer is also requesting a 14-month extension to December of 2023 for the Phase Two development. So we do have the picture up on the big board of the South Main Development. It is located between Peace and Independence, uh, Peace and Independence Street and just west of Main Street. So Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, in explaining this item, it's very important for council to take into consideration the origins of this project. And specifically, I'm going to give a very brief background. When we first started this development back in 2017, 2018, what we have up on the big board is the former Webster School site and also three residential properties that were located just north of Webster School. Three housing, uh, and three single-family houses that were located just north of Webster School. The reason I'm pointing this out is back when we started this project in 2018, housing was a goal of the city, but also we identified this area, this general area as a blighted area in the city of Pella. And specifically, what we created at the time was the Western Park Urban Renewal Plan. And for those following at home on slide number four, is the map up on the big board that we have here with the diagonal lines through it is the Western Park Urban Renewal Area. When we created the urban renewal area, one of the goals that we had was to promote economic development and also light elimination through economic development. And specifically, we identified various, various projects that we suffice in that housing was identified as one housing as a key strategic goal for the city of Pella. So with that, as part of our process, we actually had this area evaluated by a consultant. The consultant felt that 75% of the area that has shown up on the board or the part of the urban renewal area met the definition of blight under the state of Iowa proposed standards. So the city council subsequently adopted the urban renewal plan. Light elimination was a key part of this. And what we're hoping to do is eliminate light through economic development. Now, what we have to date is a very fine first phase. In fact, is, is a project, if you're looking at housing developments, it's really a showcase for southeast, southeast Iowa. It's a high-quality housing development that's taking place to date. What the developers have stated as far as Phase Two and the reason they're proposing three single-family attached housing units is just based off market demand in Pella. Right around when this development started, the city began a strong drive towards additional housing in our community. Subsequently, we've had over 400 housing units or plans for housing units to be constructed in Pella. So based off the additional supply that did not, additional, additional supply of housing that was not in existence in 2018, and through the market conditions, what the developer feels they could build and actually sell as far as Phase Two is the three single-family attached homes that we're about ready to review tonight. So again, I wanted just to briefly review the origins of this development. That was the main, main priority was light elimination through economic development. And so far today, we've had a very successful first phase for the project. And what we're talking about this evening through this amendment is the second phase of the project. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, I believe we've covered some of this up here, but some of the specifics, when we looked at the light elimination over a 20-year period of time, which is the length of time with urban renewal plan, it's very important to understand when you look at the map up there and consider what was back in 2018, the former school site on the property site, from a developer's standpoint, it's a very small development site, this site is approximately three acres on there. And when you look at the redevelopment of the site and also a significant portion of this contained blighted properties, there's a lot of uncertainty and a very challenging development. So these are the factors that we considered in 2018 when we originally approved the development agreement. But what the council approved in 2018 was a rebate of property taxes or new property taxes that would be generated from the property on the development. And so what we did back in 2018 is we had a fixed or a set rebate of property taxes generated from the development over a 20-year period of time. What we estimated the value of that was, was about $6.1 million. Now, what the developer agreed to was to build Phase One of the development and also Phase Two of the development, and they also agreed to minimum tax assessments for the development as well. So the minimum tax valuation that we approved in 2018 was just over, it was right at $9,760,000. That is the taxable valuation. When we look at it, considering the residential rollback, the actual gross valuation of what the project was estimated cost at the time was about $16.5 million. The developer also agreed to a 1.5% increase annually in the, in the minimum tax assessment as well. So very important to keep in mind, again, you're talking about property taxes generated from the developer on new buildings that did not exist in 2018. From the city's standpoint, when we look at the history of this development, this was owned by the Pella Community School District for a number of years, since the mid-1950s, if memory serves me correctly. 2003, 2004, it was transferred over to Central College. It's been off the tax rolls for a number of years. So we simply looked at it, again, with consideration that blight elimination was the number-one priority of the city of Pella. Housing was definitely a priority for the city of Pella. We looked at the project as far as the property tax generation on it. We looked at it, it hadn't been paying property taxes since the mid-1950s. And we had a chance to have a very high-quality housing development in place of current assets or current house, buildings, rather, that were deemed blighted under Iowa law. So that's a little bit of the background in 2018. And again, that served as the basis for our agreement. And certainly, as far as Phase One of the development, which can constitute 18 housing units, those were the conditions back in 2018. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. As we stated earlier, to date, 18 housing units have been completed and constructed. Now, again, this is being driven by market conditions in Pella. And we have a little chart up here on this slide and basically shows what the differences are between what we approved back in 2018 and what the developer is proposing now. So we originally started out with, we had overall plans for 42 housing units. And if you recall, one of the key items that we had in the original plan was a condominium townhome building, a large building. The developer is subsequently informed as due to the number of housing units that have came online in Pella, they do not believe there's a market demand for that type of housing unit. So what they're proposing in lieu of that is six additional single-family attached homes. And so those would be six new units that would be built on there. So we started off with 42 housing units. What is being proposed by the developer is 24. As far as completion date for Phase Two, the current development agreement states that Phase Two would be completed by October of 2022. The developer has asked till 2020, December of 2023, complete the housing units. And when we look at the minimum assessment on the development, again, for Phase Two, we had an original agreement of $3,854,000. On this, the developer has requested $2,666,000. Now, from that standpoint, the city's standpoint, when we look at the minimum tax assessment, that's really something that's being driven by the developer and the parties that ultimately buy the units. Please keep in mind that opposed under the original development agreement, there would be property taxes rebated on it. So we decreased and assessed valuation on this as far as the tax increment financing revenues. We do not believe will be material to the city of Pella. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, what we have up here on the big board shows what is currently approved by the, in the development agreement. And as you can see on the far left-hand side of the slide there, we have that condominium townhome development. What is being proposed now by the developer in lieu of that building, they're actually proposing two additional single-family attached homes, actually three for, for Phase Two of the development on that as well. So again, if you want to look at it simplistically, the condominium townhome development would be replaced by three single-family attached, attached homes on the property. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Okay. Now, in summary on this, it's important to keep in mind that the overall intention of the Western Park Development was redevelopment within our community, particularly our goal was blind elimination at the time. We also believe that the housing development that's been constructed today certainly means seeing 10 of the plans and has been a very successful project in the eyes of, of staff on this. And really, when we look at the changes that we're talking about for Phase Two, these are being driven by market conditions as they currently exist by the developer. So we believe it's in the city's best intentions or best interest, rather than the staff's perspective, to work with the developer to have a successful Phase Two for the community as well and ultimately conclude this project. So with that, Mr. Mayor, and looking at the terms, once again, I'd like to emphasize they're very similar to what we discussed or they are the exact same terms that we discussed on November 16. And as a result, the city staff is recommending approval of the Third Amendment to the Development Agreement this evening. With that, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor and council may have on this item.
All right, thanks, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Spoor.
Hopkins, spoor, discussion, questions?
I guess I'm really disappointed in, with the valuation that got, um, significant like that, that there was no thought or talk or reduction of the citizens involved in it. I stand at 6.1 and the valuation has decreased that much. I think it would have been appropriate that our citizens' input would have been decreased also.
Mandy, could you go to the slide which showed the overall, the, from the aerial on the, you know, how, how much of the, the green space is going to go with the individual houses and how much is going to be, I guess, common area?
As far as the common area, we don't believe that's significantly changed with the overall concept plan. As far as the exact percentages, I'd have to look at, look on it. But as far as the, the green space area, certainly not a decrease. If anything, it's going to be an increase to the area.
So, so those, those, uh, single-family, they're not going to own a big yard all the way to the middle?
We believe that'll be common ownership on those.
Okay, anything else? All right, so we're voting on the resolution to approve the amendment. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Dan Struck.
Yes.
Ski Bow.
No.
Motion passed. Moving on, Resolution number 6370 entitled Resolution Approving Change Order Number One, Final Quantity Adjustment and Mislandy's Items and Accepting Public Improvements for the 218th Avenue and Neil Drive Reconstruction Project. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. For those following at home, I'm on slide number nine this evening. As Mayor Duarte stated, what we are entertaining this evening is change order number one for 218th Avenue and the Neil Drive Reconstruction Project. We do have a map of the project area up on the big board. And basically, what this project involved was replacing an existing gravel. And I'd say a portion of the road is asphalt, uh, surface road with a brand-new urban, urban, urban city street or a concrete street that you have on it. Change order number one tonight is rectifying the final quantities adjustment for the project. So what we're simply doing is when the contractor bid on the project, what we're simply doing is rectifying or reconciling what their bid amount was for the actual quantities that were actually placed in the ground. Now, the cut to the chase this evening, what we have is a total reduction in the contract of just over $3,004,000 as far as the final quantities adjustment. The council ordered to approve this final contract amount. Total cost or construction cost of the project is $1,279,716. It's also important to note that the project or the resolution that we're also considering this evening also accepts the public improvement for the contractor. And we do have a letter from the engineer stating that they do believe that the contractor, that our project was bid in accordance with the city and council's approved plans and specifications for the project. So basically, Mr. Mayor, I believe that concludes our, our presentation this evening. And staff is recommending approval of the resolution, which approves change order number one, which is the final quantities adjustment for the project, as well as it also accepts the public improvements for the project as well. And we do have a picture of the new street out there for the development. So with that, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor and council may have on this item.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval? Or Ski Bow, De Young, discussion?
How's, uh, truck traffic working on that? I haven't any complaints since it's open, I guess. Do they actually stop at the intersection? Uh, not very often. We hope that will improve, but, you know, we'll get there. People are used to, this still kind of feels like a big curve, you know?
Okay, anything else? All right, so we'll vote on the motion for approval of the resolution. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Ski Bow.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Dan Struck.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6371 entitled Resolution Approving Amendment to Engineering Services Agreement of Garden &amp; Associates for the University Street and 8th Street Reconstruction Project. Mike?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor Duarte stated, what we're actually approving or actually proposing this evening is amended, is an amendment to an existing engineering services agreement that we have with Garden &amp; Associates. Now, as council is aware, when we talk about the University Street Reconstruction Project that would begin on East 8th, we are planning on undergoing this project in 2022. What this amendment is simply doing is adding on East 8th Street to the north of the P Street, from University to P Street. And when we reviewed this section of street, considering that University Street is going to be closed during the construction project, we also think it makes sense at the time to redo this portion of, of, of East 8th Street as well with the project in consideration that it'd be very efficient to do it both at the same time. Now, what we're planning on doing, the council were to approve this in our current tentative schedule on this, is we're hoping to start this project after 2 of that, late May of this year with the project. And if everything goes as planned with it, we're actually hoping to get this project done before school starts next year. So we got a very aggressive timeframe on it with this. And so with this, the amendment is actually going north, adds the East 8th portion of the project along with the University Street reconstruction. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as the amendment to add East 8th onto this project, we're looking at an additional $29,000. Now, one of the key takeaways when you consider engineering fees, it's always important to note, look at the scope of the project and what we have here is somewhat of a high-profile street segment. We're going to be working very close with the Pella Community School District on this project as well. When we look at the $29,000 and we consider the overall engineering cost of the project, it's just shy of $125,000 for engineering fees. Now, overall, we believe that the construction cost is going to be somewhere right north of $880,000. Engineering fees, we estimate it's going to be about 12%. We think that's in an acceptable range, particularly when you, when you consider the tight timeframe that we'll, we'll be working on as well. And in addition, this is kind of a late add for the engineering, the scope of the project as well. So we have to crunch things to be able to get this project and actually bid it out by January, February-ish of this year as well. So overall, with Garden &amp; Associates, I think from staff standpoint, we've been very pleased with the level of work that they've done in Pella. They certainly have a lot of experience working on street projects in Pella. And as a result, we are recommending approval this, this evening, Mr. Mayor. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor and council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Spoor.
Branderhorst, Ski Bow, discussion?
Was the construction cost estimate after the amendment? Danny? Yeah, I can speak to that. That number makes me nervous. That's my number for now. Being the engineer's design, he'll refine that number with an engineer's estimate. You know, with the supply chain issues today, that number scared me that has my name on it. It may not be enough, but we'll see what Jackson's up with. Okay.
Danny, what do we do to that whole block of, uh, 8th, East 8th? We re-surface in that or?
Uh, total reconstruction. If you look at it, it's, it's been job, it's been overlaid over the years. And we hope to at least get it another two feet wider with the traffic considered. Not quite enough room to go to clear to the 31, but, and there's a total lack of storms around the area. There is none. That's another expense. As we turn around and corner, go to 8th, we may have to bring storms all the way from the creek down across from the pool to get something going. So we're looking at that as well.
What about sewer and water? Any of that need redone?
Uh, not in conflict. Yes, we're adding water also in that building. Both streets, new eight-inch, replace mold cap. And we'll be adding hydrant. It's amazing that that school campus is sitting there today and there's no hydrant along that stretch to 8th Street.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right, so we're going to vote on approving the resolution. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Branderhorst.
Yes.
Ski Bow.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Dan Struck.
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6372 entitled Resolution Approving and Authorizing Execution of Agreement between Marion County and the City of Pella to Establish Pella Precinct 1, a precinct of incorporated and unincorporated, unincorporated territory. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item for those following at home. I'm on slide number 13 this evening. Mayor Duarte stated what we are entertaining this evening is proposed agreements with Marion County. And specifically, what we're looking to do is establish precincts unincorporated and also have incorporated, excuse me, unincorporated territory. also have incorporated, excuse me, unincorporated territory. Now, to explain this item, during the review of the 2020 census, it was discovered that several blocks located near city limits included both unincorporated territory, incorporated territory, excuse me, within the city limits, and also unincorporated territory outside of the city limits. Now, under Iowa law, what the Secretary of State requires is that the city and county work together to ensure that the precinct boundaries align with the census blocks. And that's ultimately what we're trying to do this evening on it, to keep matters relatively simple. Now, if you see me reaching for over here, I'm kind of lost tonight. I don't have my pointer, so I'm going to have to ask the city clerk to help me out this evening. But what we should have up here on the big board is the proposed precinct number one for the City of Pella. The easiest way to explain this item is the tan area is the incorporated area that we have for precinct number one. The diagonal lines, the red lines, is the unincorporated area. Now, when we look at these two geographical areas, currently in our precinct number one, we have over 2,000, 2,600 residents located in this area. Lake Prairie has 39 residents in this area. This would be the new precinct number one that is being proposed. Very important to note, even though, Mandy, correct me if I'm wrong, these 39 Lake Prairie Township residents, even though they're included in precinct number one, they would not be eligible to vote in municipal elections. It's just simply for precinct purposes, but they would not vote in municipal elections, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Okay, so that's the first resolution that we have this evening. The second one's very similar to northwest Pella that we have here. What you see up on the big board is the large blue area. That's really precinct, that is Pella Precinct Number Three. What's being proposed again is the red line or diagonal lines area. That is the unincorporated area of Lake Prairie. That includes 107 Lake Prairie Township residents. We need to have two agreements for these two precinct areas that we have with Marion County on here. And once again, these residents would not be, or Lake Prairie Township residents would not be eligible to vote in our municipal elections as well. So, Mandy, you've been working very closely on this item. Is there anything left to cover with the city council that there needs to be mentioned?
No, I think you covered it really well. It just comes down to census blocks. The Secretary of State does not like when precincts cut census blocks, so it's cleaning that up for them, so they accept our word changes, which we'll talk about next.
Okay.
So there's really no advantage or disadvantage to the city or citizens in or out of?
That's correct.
It's just for a state? Okay.
Yes, it used to be that those that were in the unincorporated areas would physically go to a city polling location to vote, and that's not the case anymore. So it's, it is purely paperwork.
Okay. Just what you need, right?
All right, so resolution, the first resolution, 6372, establishing precinct one. Can I get a motion for approval?
Please adopt.
Ford? DeYoung, Skibout, any other questions, discussion?
Mandy, do the maps that are attached to this, do they assume we're going to make the change about the wards? Are they?
Yes, so, yep, you're exactly right. So the ordering of doing a public hearing next is dependent upon these agreements. Yes, they go handed here. Yes, you're correct.
Okay, anything else? Okay, so we'll vote on resolution number 6372. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Skibout?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Danstr?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on to resolution number 6373 entitled resolution approving and authorizing execution of an agreement between Marion County and the City of Pella to establish Pella Precinct Three, a precinct of incorporated and unincorporated territory. Mike's already explained it. Can I get a motion for approval?
Please approve.
Ford? Skibout DeYoung, any questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Skibout?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Danstr?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on, public hearing. Public hearing regarding amendment of city code chapter three, election wards pursuant to the 2020 consensus, or census. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And I'd like to direct the mayor and council's attention to the big board for this item. As Mayor Duarte stated, what we're hoping to do or actually proposing to do with this ordinance is equal out the city wards within our community in account for the 2020 census. And the easiest way to explain this is what we have up here on the board. It's a comparison between the 2010 population versus the 2020 census that we had. And overall, we increased in population by 112 citizens. And as you can see, there were some discrepancies or various increases and decreases within the individual wards. What we're looking to do is balancing through this ordinance is to balance out the ward, so we have approximately the same number of citizens in each individual ward in the City of Pella. And the magic number that we're shooting for would be 2,616. Now, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. It is important to note that when we look at this, if council were to approve this ordinance, and through the various changes that we have in moving various blocks and the boundaries around the various wards, as you can see, what we would have after the proposed re-precincts, three precincts up here is ward number one would have 2,603 residents, ward number two would have 2,633, ward number three, 2,622, and ward number four would be 2,606 on it. So again, we're shooting for roughly, or try as best we can, to get roughly equal representation in each one of the wards that we have. It is important to note that previously, we discussed the same ordinance during our November policy and planning session as well. And, Mandy, once again, on this, if you want to walk us through these various changes that's being proposed on the geographical boundaries, I would appreciate it.
Sure, yes. So up on the board, highlighted in red, there's the noted 11 census blocks that will change from current representation to the new. The goal is to get those numbers as close as possible, with changing the boundaries as minimally as possible, which is what we ended up with here. Important to see that where the individuals who are representing wards live is not going to be affected by it, just the people that you represent to the ones appointed to wards change just slightly.
Okay. Now, we have a couple of agenda items up here. The ordinance that actually adopts the various ward changes that we just discussed up here, that's agenda item F1B. And then F1C actually authorizes the city clerk to sign and submit the city re-precincting worksheet to the Secretary of State for certification as well. Now, it is important to note that we do have somewhat of a time issue at hand, Mandy, and I believe everything needs to be due to the state of Iowa by the end of this year. So as a result, we had discussed this during the work session, and staff respectively request tonight the mayor and council that we waive the second and third readings for this proposed ordinance.
Okay? That it?
That is it, sir. Thank you.
All right. Any written comments?
No written comments.
Any comments from council?
I'm just curious why Mahaska County's involved. Excuse me? Why is Mahaska County involved?
Why? The city has actually expanded into Mahaska County.
But there's no residence there.
Yeah, it's still on our boundary that we have up there as far as that. It's still...
Okay, any comments from any member of the audience concerning this item? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Remove.
Ford? DeYoung, Brandon Horst, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Danstr?
Yes.
Skibout?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, now moving on to the ordinance number one, 005, entitled an ordinance amending all provisions regarding chapter three election wards of the city code of the City of Pella, Iowa. This is the first reading. I doubt there's any...
You're correct, sir.
Okay, can I get a motion for approval?
Remove.
Support.
Hopkins, Skibout, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Skibout?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Danstr?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Do we have to set these both separately? Does this and the next one have to each go through separately?
Um, this ordinance, as far as the next reading on it, is that what?
No, the next...
There'll be a separate, there'll be a separate motion for that one C.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're still in the ordinance, yeah.
I'm with Lou that we set aside second and third reading, ma'am.
Okay.
Spore.
Skibout, Brandon Horst, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no.
Skibout?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Danstr?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Remove.
Spore.
Skibout, Brandon Horst, motion to adopt ordinance number one, 005. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Skibout?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Danstr?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion authorizing the city clerk to sign and submit the re-precincting worksheet to the Secretary of State?
Remove.
Ford? DeYoung, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Danstr?
Yes.
Skibout?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, ordinance number one, 003, entitled an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Pella, Iowa by amending the boundaries of the R3 district to include property located at 413 Jefferson Street and 1108 East Second Street, and directing the zoning administrator to note the ordinance number and date of this change on official zoning map. This is the second reading. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item, and I'd like to direct the mayor and council's attention to the big board. For those following at home, I'm on slide number 21 this evening. As Mayor Duarte stated, we are entertaining this evening is a rezoning request by Mid-North Properties, and specifically what they're looking for, the individual properties of 413 Jefferson Street, as well as 1108 East Second Street. Now, the area that we're talking about is the yellow highlighted area up on the big board, and just north of this, and just north of Jefferson Street is Pella Regional Hospital as well, for reference for the council. Now, it is important to note that these properties are currently vacant, and they were previously the Jefferson Place Care Facility. So let's go ahead, please. Mandy? Now, the proposed rezoning that we have tonight is from institutional, rezoning institutional as the account, which was accounted for the prior use, which was the care facility to R3, which is high-density residential. And what is being proposed is for a multifamily housing unit this evening. Now, anytime we have a rezoning request, it's always a good idea to look around and see what zoning surrounds the property. And that's what we have up here on this particular slide. And as you can see, everything that surrounds the property is residential of some sort, either R3 or R2. And so from a zoning standpoint, we do not believe that this constitutes spot zoning because R3 zoning is in very close proximity to the, to the subject property that is the red highlighted area up on the big board. Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as council is well aware, what we always use as our benchmark to guide zoning decisions is the city's comprehensive plan. When we talk about conformance with the city's comprehensive plan, we're talking about conformance with the entire document, not necessarily individual sections. In this particular case, there's a couple of items that we do wish to point out, too. One of the key strategic objectives in the city's comprehensive plan was additional housing for the community. In fact, the comprehensive plan talks about strategies to encourage developers for additional housing. This particular project, as we have proposed by the developer, we classified as infill development. Infill development is very, very highly sought after by cities such as the South Main Development. The reason for that is a lot of the public infrastructure is already in place for the development as well. It's advantageous for the city to redevelop vacant or unused property to something useful for the City of Pella, which is in need, not useful, but also which is deemed in need or in need of the city, which is additional housing. The second item that we have, and anytime you look at this, is usually what's being made reference to, is the future use land map and the comprehensive plan. The future use land map is a guide for developers for redevelopment purposes. So generally, when you look at areas in the future use land map, you always need to take a look at the areas surrounding, and the general locations for zoning activities. As you can see up on the big board, what we have here, it was being proposed generally for the areas, high-density and low-density residential. So from a conformance standpoint, we believe that this request means a key strategic priority for the City of Pella, as it is providing additional housing for the city as well. And generally speaking, we also believe it conforms to the city's future use land map as well. So overall, when we look at this request this evening that we are considering, staff believes that the request as submitted conforms to the city's comprehensive plan. Let's go ahead, please. Mandy? Now, I believe we've talked about the first bullet point up there as well. And from our standpoint, Mr. Mayor, we believe that housing is still a priority for the City of Pella. We believe this request does conform with the city's comprehensive plan. We also believe, according to failed to mention during the comprehensive plan review, that from a land use compatibility standpoint, we believe that the proposed development will fit in very nicely with the existing neighborhood as well, according to our matrix that we utilize for that as well. Now, it is important to note that the Planning and Zoning Commission did discuss this request at their November 22 meeting, and they unanimously approved the ordinance that we are considering this evening. So with that, Mr. Mayor, staff is recommending approval of the ordinance as submitted, and we'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor and council may have on this item.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
Hopkins, Danstr, discussion?
Obviously, all the parking law requirements are fulfilled by this.
That would be a site plan issue, but in order, they will have to build an additional jury by, a jury of 50, as far as the parking lot that's going to be required for the development.
Approximately, it'll be located south in that Big Hill Square.
As far as the total number of spaces for the housing units?
25 spaces, about 500 spaces.
Okay.
Thank you. Good use of the property.
Okay, anything else? All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Danstr?
Yes.
Skibout?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I move that the third reading be waived without the ordinance be passed.
Ford? Danstr, Skibout, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Danstr?
Yes.
Skibout?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Motion passed. Can I get a motion for approval to adopt the ordinance?
Remove.
Danstr, Spore, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Danstr?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Skibout?
Yes.
Hopkins? Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on. Ordinance number 1004 entitled an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Pella, Iowa, by amending PUD plan for property located at 413 Main Street, City of Pella, Marion County, Iowa. This is second reading.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And for those who are at home, I'm on slide number 25 this evening. And as Mayor DuPont stated, what we are considering with this proposed ordinance is the amendment to the planned unit development for the South Main Development. And as we discussed, the development agreement amendment is very similar to the planned unit development. Just to distinguish between the two, the development agreement was the business side, the economic development side of the development. What we're talking about this evening is the use standpoint with the planned unit development. Now, when we talk about planned unit development, you may hear the acronym PUD. And under PUDs, these are intended for unique projects under the city's zoning. And it's really a negotiated process between city staff, and ultimately, the city council and the developer. And when we consider the South Main Development Site that is showing up on the big board, this was a very unique housing development that had a number of factors, hence the need for a planned unit development. Now, overall, what's being considered this evening is very similar to what was considered with the development agreement amendment, and specifically what the developer is proposing phase two on this. What they're actually proposing under the PUD, it's very important to note that one of the single-family homes attached units was actually approved previously for the PUD. So tonight, technically, we're talking about two additional buildings that's being proposed for the PUD because we've already got one accounted for on it. So in essence, what, under the PUD, from the latest PUD amendments, we're talking about a decrease in housing units from thirty-six to twenty-four. Still the same twenty-four housing units, it's just a little bit different levels, what's being referenced between the PUD and the various development agreement amendments that we've processed to date. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, what we have here with the developer, once again, instead of condominium townhome development, what they're actually proposing is two new single-family attached buildings that we have showing up on the big board, that's the red highlighted area. The single-family attached homes would look exactly the same as what was previously approved by the city council for the current single-family attached home on the current, on the current developer that is being proposed. It's very important to note that none of the single-family homes have been built to date. Once again, through prior amendments on the PUD, we actually had one of the single-family homes on, on the site. What they're actually proposing is two additional single-family attached homes on the site. So there'd be six new housing units, once again, to be built by the developer. Well, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Okay. Now, one of the things, we want to make sure that council is aware from a use standpoint, and council, just to bring everyone up to speed, when we previously approved the planned unit development for the development, that condominium development townhome building, we've always reserved the right, or the developer always had the right, to offer commercial services within the condominium development that, that we had there. At the time, it was unknown what level of commercial services would be needed for that building. What's being proposed with the PUD amendment, since we're replacing that condominium townhome development with single-family attached homes, is actually is the elimination of commercial use in what's referred to as building four, or the condominium development, is that would no longer exist. And we're actually moving the commercial uses to building number one, and they'd be limited to general office only. So staff's understanding that one of the units would be designated for general office use. So this would be office use only in building number one, that we do have highlighted up on the big board. So from a use standpoint, the key takeaway is instead of condominium townhome development, we're talking about two new, single-family attached buildings, four new housing units to be built. And again, we're removing the commercial use from building number four, which is the condominium townhome development, and transferring it to building number one, and eliminating that use to only office use in building number one. And with that, I believe that covers the changes. And Mandy, let's go ahead. Very similar to the development agreement amendment, and I think it goes without saying, when we look at redevelopment efforts, and particularly infill housing, we believe this development needs several key strategic rules of the city's comprehensive plan. And from city staff's standpoint, our opinion has not changed. We believe that the development is in conformance with the city's comprehensive plan. In addition, it is important to note that the Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission did consider the same ordinance at their November 22 meeting, and they unanimously approved the ordinance that we are considering this evening. So with that, Mr. Mayor, we are recommending approval of the PUD ordinance amendment as submitted this evening, and we'd more than happy to answer any questions the mayor and council may have on this item.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
For? DeYoung, Hopkins. Discussion? Questions?
Just under the phrase "general office," and it's pretty broad, I would assume like insurance agent or realtor, that would be the, the genre?
Yes, you are correct, yes.
And you said DNC was unanimous?
Yes, sir.
It does have the advantage of off-street parking. That does have the advantage of off-street parking.
Okay, any other thing else? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Mandy, please call the rule.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
For?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strach?
Yes.
Ski Bow?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I'll make a motion to waive the statutory rule for the third reading.
For?
Okay, Banstrer, for. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Mandy, please call the rule.
Dan Strach?
Yes.
For?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Ski Bow?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed. Motion to approve and adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
For? Banstrer, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Mandy, please call the rule.
Dan Strach?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Ski Bow?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
For?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on. Abstract bills number 2093. Can I get a motion for approval?
Move to approve initial warrants.
Rayner Horst? Hopkins, any discussions, questions?
Reimbursement to Osqualusa's SCRA business?
Yeah. I'm gonna let our Assistant City Administrator, Cora Goodall, explain this, but in essence, Cora, this is just reimbursement grant proceeds that the city received for the South Central Regional Airport.
They advanced funds to us for the land acquisition, and then we received the FA grant, so we're reimbursing them for that.
Now, just, yeah, just how the SCRA works, it's funded by the cities up front on it. So Oskaloosa advanced fifty percent of the land acquisition cost for the regional airport. Now, today, we've purchased, the SCRA's purchased three hundred and seventy-seven acres for the project. It's all been on a voluntary basis. How the process works, Oskaloosa advances half the cost, the city of Pella advances half the cost. When the FA grant proceeds come in, that's when the reimbursement occurs back to Oskaloosa for their share of the FA reimbursement.
And the grant all comes to us?
Yes, that is correct. That's why we're writing a checkback.
Thank you. I thought maybe Osko was banking for us.
Then we wouldn't get a handling fee. It charged interest.
Oh, yeah. Oh, he sold that last time, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? All right. All in favor of approving paying those bills, please say yes, opposed, no. Mandy, please call the rule.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
For?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Dan Strach?
Yes.
Ski Bow?
Yes.
Motion passed. All right, council members, anybody have any other business they want to address tonight?
I do.
Okay.
Um, I'm not sure if humility disallowed Councilmember Ski Bow from having a proclamation in his name, but I'd like to take this opportunity to thank him for twenty-plus years of service. You have the heart, the size of your size fourteen shoes. You have a knowledge that you've allowed me to extrapolate from, and I think that this community is a better place to live because of the twenty, is it twenty-two, Bruce?
I understand.
Oh, just twenty. Excuse me. We're, it's a better place because you served your community for twenty years, and I would like to thank you. You're welcome. I don't think he wanted me to do that.
I would have been nice to know.
Sorry.
Anybody else?
Just one thing, maybe on a little bit lighter note, I got a email from the Netherlands from asking me what we were doing to celebrate our one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary next year. Does the city?
They keep track of that?
This guy did. And so I, I Googled, and there are, the first thing Mandy and the microphone have to do, there's eight different words for one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary. My favorite is demi semi septennial. But I don't know if the Historical Society or, so it'll be one hundred and seventy-five years next year.
A council member will, will reach out to the Historical Society, as well as PACE and the CBB on this issue. Thank you for bringing that up.
Should've known Calvin would be on top of it.
It's Stan.
Well, I thought Mark, but he probably remembered when it started.
All right, anything else, council? All right, can we have these lights turned on? So now it's time for public comments. If you want to do that, I would ask that you please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and please try to limit your comments to three minutes. I don't want to be a time policeman here, but please try to do that, so. Anyone?
Hi, thank you. My name is Michelle Jones. I live on eleven seventeen Sunset Avenue in Pella. And first, I want to thank you from opportunity to speak to you. I wanted to take this time to express my concern about a book that has just recently been added to the Pella Public Library and is currently shelved there. The name of it is Gender Queer. It's a graphic novel that is in comic strip format. Within this book, there are several sexually explicit images, obscene pictures, and to be more descriptive, they're not just naked pictures of characters in the book, these are pictures of naked characters doing sexually explicit activities on each other, to each other. It's not just nudity. So in my view, this would be considered cartoon pornography, for lack of a better term. This book is particularly concerning to me because of the medium that it is, the fact that it is graphic in nature, and looks like a comic strip or cartoon, and is therefore extremely enticing to children. If this book merely contained the author's story, I don't know why I'm crying. If it merely contained the author's story, just in text form only, I would not be here tonight along with a lot of the other people sitting here, because it's not the text that I object to, it's the pictures that I object to. The library board met last Tuesday, heard a number of comments, more than twenty people spoke, with concerns of this graphic nature of this book, and, one second. Okay, start over. They refused to keep the book behind the front desk. They wanted to keep it out in open circulation, where any person with a library card can check it out. You can get a library card at the age of five years old, so any age from five up can check the book out, can look at it at the library. Excuse me. Their reasoning was that this book has literary value or could be considered educational in nature. I can appreciate that this author's story may appeal to a certain demographic. However, a child who picks up this book from the reselling cart or could see it lying on a table, if they're not going to read it and then assess the literary value of the book, they are simply going to flip through the pages and be exposed to cartoon pornography, and that will be immediate. We are visual beings by nature. The images that anyone sees in that book, children or not, they cannot be unseen, and the damage that is instantaneously done to a child cannot be undone. No amount of texts around those images can justify any child seeing them. I thought it was going to be composed if it was in your office, and it's not. The damaging effects of pornography are not up for debate, they are indisputable, they're well-studied, they're well-documented. Pornography is addictive, is addictive in nature, and it can actually physically alter your brain. They've done studies where people addicted to pornography, their brains look like the people that are addicted to drugs or alcoholics. So it's particularly damaging to a still-developing child's brain, as you can imagine. Almost done. It was mentioned at the library board meeting that the parents are responsible for watching their children at the library, should be monitoring what they read, and I totally agree. If I saw my twelve-year-old sit down with a racy book like Fifty Shades of Grey, which is a soft pornography kind of book, I would immediately take it away and explain that that material is inappropriate for you, and for most adults. Thankfully, for most books, it would take several minutes or pages of reading for a child to encounter inappropriate content. The unique problem with this book is the images take only a split second to see. It is unreasonable to expect parents to watch their child for every split second they're in the library. However, it is reasonable to expect that a child would not encounter harmful, dangerous items at the library, whether it would be shards of glass on the shelf, a loaded handgun on the shelf, a container of rat poison in the corner, or pornographic images. That's reasonable. The library board and staff have ignored Pella community standards and continue to shelf this book in open circulation. So I'm asking the council, who budgets seven hundred and ten thousand dollars of taxpayer money to the library, but this is ninety-six percent of their budget, if my math is correct, I would plead with you to exercise your authority or your influence, given your positions, and I would ask that you approach them in reconsidering their decision. If they decide, or if they refuse, I would ask you, please stop giving my tax dollars to an organization that would refuse to put reasonable barriers between cartoon pornography and children. I would also like you to consider having council oversight of the library board in the future. I know this is common practice for many other boards, just PACE Alliance, or boards that receive taxpayer funding. Similar oversight is clearly needed here as well. Thank you.
Two twelve Jefferson Street, apartment twelve. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm speaking regarding the graphic novel Gender Queer. We are displeased with the library codes in place, if this is the type of material that will be snuck in. Despite, despite the pleas from the public to save their children, the library board appealed to the laws and codes. These codes should be viewed as illegitimate and changed in order to better fit this town's higher standards. This is, this is an attack not only on our children's innocence, but on the traditional family, which is still very much alive in Pella. When the traditional family is broken, society collapses. Do you want to represent the family, or do you want to represent the imposing, obfuscating legal system which will destroy it? Regarding the library board, they misunderstood us at the last meeting. We do not want them to babysit our kids. We do not want them slapping books out of their hands. We simply want there to be no material we have to worry about. With this on the shelves, the library is now one less place parents can relax a little bit inside of, one less place our children can explore independently. I find it disheartening that the library is so unwilling to help provide a family-friendly environment. It seems that the board does not bear in mind the interests and well-being of the family. If books like this were to be allowed in the library, we're in for seeing much worse. The slippery slope is a fallacy in theory only. In real life, it's the realest thing I've witnessed. People in generations may begrudgingly accept an inch, an inch and a half at a time, but the destination of the mounting increments is not where people want to be. So we must not concede this, we must not allow this to pass for many reasons, but at least to not bring ourselves closer to losing everything good and pure in this town. That is really what that fallacy is. Again, it's not about censorship, it's that we don't want literal pornography within children's reach, in an environment meant to be child-friendly. I guess I just wanted to add that I understand what the board came to their conclusion on date. They said it was because it didn't violate a code, because the graphic novel has literary integrity. So I understand that I'm not really going to be able to say that they've done anything illegal or out of code or anything. I think the problem is that the code says what it says, and it allows things like that to be allowed in the library. And I just don't, I think either the code should be changed, or I think we should allow exceptions to be made when people are so concerned about things like this. I guess that's where, thank you.
Thank you.
I would, my name is Michelle Warren. I live at six fifty-five Two Hundred and Tenth Avenue, within the two-mile radius of Pella. I'm here in support of the parents who are very concerned about this piece of literature that's being available for distribution or for, for young children to get their hands on, when it contains material that is very dangerous to their emotional development. What, what I have here are a colored printout of some of the select illustrations that are featured in this book. Some of them are very offensive. And not only do I have copies of the illustrations, but I also have a reference sheet that outlines the written material, as well as the illustrative material that I consider inappropriate for children to get their hands on, to see and to read. So if you can give me a moment, I'd be happy to distribute these to you all. You can take one if you have some.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'd like to pass these out to the rest of you, so you can all at least get a copy of the written material along with the illustrated pictures as well. And these last two ladies have already done a wonderful job at explaining the situation we're in right now, so I think I'll have a seat. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Pastor Michael Shover, Christ the Redeemer Church, Live at One Thousand Sunset here in Pella. Here we are again. And we said over the summer that these things were going to continue, and here we are again, addressing these same issues. So I want to talk to you about something that the scripture tells us, what is the role of the civil magistrate? That's you. And it's one, two-part, it's, it's one to punish- And it's one, two-part, it's one to punish evil, but it's also to promote the good. We were speaking tonight about it's the city's top priority to address blight, and we're taking care of that in the form of town, of physical infrastructure. But what about spiritual blight? What about moral blight? Moral things that are depraved in nature and disgusting and vile? What about those things? Are we in the business, we as in you, and the people who you oversee in the library and at the pool and whatnot? Are you in the business of removing spiritual blight from this town? I would say you are. That is your job. That is your job, that you're calling to promote the good. And you promote the good by having a standard by which you can say, this is good and this is bad. I don't know, if any one of you says that any of those pictures in that thing that's wonderful lady just handed out is morally good, then you need to go back to church. I know of a good one you can get to. Jesus taught that temptations are bound to come to little children, right? But woe to the one by whom the temptation comes. It's better for a millstone to be hung around their neck and they're drowned in the depths of the sea than to allow a little one who believes in Jesus to sin. What we have here is something that is possibly allowing little children to fall into great sin, to see something that is very terrible. And you have opportunity to correct it. You have power to correct it. We encourage you, all of us are here, we encourage you, we want you to do that. We want to see this town as beautiful internally, spiritually, as it is externally, in the outside. We spend millions and millions and millions of dollars to make this town beautiful, but if it's rotten from the inside because we are inept at addressing spiritual moral issues, then this town, then it's all for naught.
That's right. Amen.
So we just want to encourage you. Do your job, you do it well on the external realm, look to the heart, look to the heart of the issue. We are all moral people, this is a Christian town, and we want to see morality embraced and promoted in the public square. That's your job. Thank you.
Hi, Kelly Croy, 1047 220th Street, Pella. First off, I want to thank you guys for your work for the city of Pella. I know it's sometimes a hard job and really appreciate all you do. We love the library. I have some older kids, my daughter Cora, they know her there by name. If I go in, they're like, where's Cora? But she's 14, she could go anywhere in that library, and she could pick this book off the shelf, and I would just be devastated if she saw some of these pictures. I just showed a couple of them to my 42-year-old sister right before I came here, because she didn't know what I was talking about. She was so shocked, she turned them over right away and absolutely did not want to see them. And she's 42, and I think about our children that could see it off the shelf. Now, this book is available online. I also requested that it maybe be put behind the shelf, for only being requested. So again, it's the visual portion that anybody could get off of the shelf that is the main problem with it, and if you look at the pictures, I think you'll see what we're talking about. But I wanted to also talk about how I met with Mara, the library director. She was kind enough to meet with me and answer a lot of my questions, and I really appreciated that. I did ask her, does the library have any policies against, let's say, male nudity in any books there? No. Okay, a female? No. What about minors? You know, is there a policy against having minors for nudity? Nope. I said, well, what if somebody requested Playboy or Hustler or something like that to be on our shelves? Is there a policy against that? I'm trying to get after, is there a policy against pornography in our library? And I was told no, that some of those magazines are available at other libraries. No one has requested it at our library, and therefore it hasn't been addressed. But if somebody requested it, then they would check into whether or not they would put it on our shelves. So there is no policy against that. And I think about our town and the community standards that we have here in Pella, and a lot of people have already talked about that. This town is special, it's unique, people really want to raise their children here. And then we have a library, and it doesn't have any policies against having pornography on the shelves. It doesn't have any policies against any books that would maybe promote pedophilia or pederasty, or anything that would have to do with grooming, or could influence our children in any ways. And so I guess I'm up here asking, maybe number one, for council oversight. We do give a lot of taxpayer money to the library. Can we have some policies in place that would reflect the values and the community standards of Pella and protecting our children from the books that are on the shelves that they could open and see a visual picture like this? I'm sure there's plenty of stuff at the library I probably wouldn't agree with and wouldn't want, but this one, one second, can't be unseen. They don't have to read a passage, they can see this picture in a split second. My sister looked at it, turned it over, that's how fast she saw it and was offended by it. So I would really love council oversight. You guys do a great job. I would really like that because of the, we don't want books like that on our shelves. And we do have a lot of taxpayer money going there. I would just say, you know, I believe the Lord calls us to protect our children, and that includes from the hyper-sexualization of our culture. I take that job very seriously, take it seriously with my kids, but with other children around the community too. So please, make policies that protect our children, help ensure that the library is a safe place. I can let my kids go there, and they could walk around and be safe. And I wish you all a blessed Christmas, celebrating the birth of our risen Savior. Thank you, guys.
Hello, Stacey Keenest, 1119 Sunset Avenue. I spoke at the library board meeting as well, and I just kind of wanted to repeat my comments here. I had a very nice conversation also with Mars Strickler, maybe a couple months ago, just regarding maybe some more homeschool materials into the library, and wondering what is the process for getting materials into the library? And at that time, she explained that one element to it is considering community standards when she selects material. At the board meeting, that seemed a relevant thing to bring up. I had asked, how do you determine what community standards are? Myself and I think several others here have turned in to the library the statement of concern form. I don't know how many they normally receive on material that they acquire, but I would definitely think they've received a record number of statements of concern forms. But then was very disappointed at the last board meeting that that didn't really seem to be something that they were considering that had possibly violated community standards. So I guess I would like a little more clarification from them, or some kind of a policy in place, how are they going to address that when community standards seem to have been violated? It seems to me that the library, more than looking to community standards, they are looking a lot to the American Library Association. The American Library Association obviously loves this book, has given it a lot of awards. When you look into the American Library Association, one of the first things that I noticed was that the American Library Association brought a legal suit against the Child Internet Protection Act. This is the act that requires libraries to put filters on their computers so that kids in the library cannot see child pornography, obscene material, anything that's considered harmful to children. Again, the American Library Association is against that. They don't want those filters in place. So their agenda, their values, I think are very different from my values, from I think most of our values, and from the community at whole's values. So I think there might be a mistake there if the library is looking to them for guidance versus looking to the community. Those are my comments. Thank you.
My name is Rochelle Skibout, and I live at 2136 Idaho Drive in Pella. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to our concerns. I am concerned about the recent purchase of Gender Queer at our library. And my primary concern in regards to that book is when you look at those pictures, it does portray pedophilia. And, you know, my husband and I have had opportunities to meet with some amazing abuse survivors, and when I see a book like this, it just breaks my heart because those pictures communicate to them that that's normal. And I don't think that's what we want to communicate to somebody who is being abused right now, or somebody who has been abused, that this is normal. And if you have a problem with it, you know, the problem must be yours, it's not your perpetrator. And I know it's in the context of literature, and I know that's not what the storyline is about, but those pictures communicate a pretty clear message. And I don't think that message fits with our community standards. And as a whole, I really don't think our local library fits with our community standards because we are, it's hard to get good, high-quality literature on our library shelves. And I'm told a lot of that comes from the suppliers, they have two main suppliers, and they can't get a lot of the, just good literature that a lot of us, our kids would read, they're unable to purchase that. And yet, we can purchase this book, that is one of the most contested books right now, we can get that book on our shelves. And so I would just, I would really appreciate policy changes too. And after going to the library board meeting, I felt like it was pretty clear that there's a large sector of our community that's not represented on the library board, because most, none of them really considered what we said. They had already made up their mind, it seemed, and none of our concerns were actually addressed. So to me, that communicates that our library board represents one sector of our community and not actually our community as a whole. And we would like the rest of our community represented on the library board too, where maybe we can have a say in who our suppliers are and in what books do make it on the shelves. And a lot of us are big users of the library. I mean, my kids go in and check out fifty-five books at a time, and they read them all. But we would really appreciate representation. And considering a lot of our tax dollars go there, we would appreciate some oversight too on the library board. Thank you.
Keith Hoxburgh, 224 South Street. Yeah, I was the most speed. I'm glad for what everybody has said. I too was at the library meeting, and we really felt like we weren't heard. We, some of us met one-on-one afterwards with some of the committee, and it was confirmed that we were not heard. So I would like to make a formal request to be on the agenda of the next meeting, that you guys discuss it. So sometimes we go out here, did they hear us? So I want a formally request, I don't know if I have to put it right or go through all the processes, but I'm asking you guys to discuss it in public with us at your next meeting. Thank you.
I'm Peter D. Bogart, my address is 847 North Highway T-15, I'm within two miles of the city limits. I guess I'm a little concerned as to, well, something I think everybody has heard, and this is from Michigan State University. And what this is, is the description of the R rating for movies. R is restricted children under seventeen require accompanying parent, parent or adult guardian. This rating means a film contains adult material such as adult activity, harsh language and intense graphic violence, drug abuse and nudity. So if a movie theater can restrict such things being presented to the children, and adults for that matter, I guess, I'm a little concerned why our library can't, because that's what our future is, is our children. And I hope we can all work together to find a good solution to this, because I don't believe that subjecting especially young children to nudity, no matter what form or desire, can't be right. It just can't. And with the post of the millstone being hung around the neck, I would hate to be that person.
That's right.
So thank you for listening, and I hope, as a community, we can all work together to find the solutions that the necessary ratings to keep certain things out of our children's hands can be worked out together. Thank you for listening.
Hi, my name is Jill DeBrees, and I live at 623 Long Focus Drive. I just had two kind of short things. One, I keep wondering, who is this book written for? The author says it's for 12 to 16-year-olds. Everyone that has spoke at the library meeting, including those that are for the book, have said that it's not appropriate for children, so we placed it in the adult section. So then, I wonder, why is it appropriate for adults to be reading a book about minors? And not just reading, but looking at nude, sexualized children doing things? Is that who it's for then? It's for the adults, that's what we're saying in libraries, in the adult section. So it's for adults to check out and look at naked children. That doesn't, that doesn't make sense either. So it's not really for children, it's really not appropriate for adults. I thought that was called pedophilia. My second thing is, whatever side of the political aisle you are on, I feel like one of the last things in our country that we agreed on was not sexualizing children, protecting them, whether that's trafficking or from predators. If we can't agree on this, that this, these images that you've seen now, we can't agree that that's bad, that that's not helpful, it doesn't, it's not promoting good, then what can we really agree on? I think this is kind of an easy decision. This is a no-brainer. It doesn't matter, Republican or Democrat, we don't want to sexualize children. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Anita Fisher. I live at 1546 Pleasant Drive in Pella here. I prepared tonight, I wrote some thoughts down that I would like to share with you guys. In reference to the book, Gender Queer, and I can show it to you if anybody wants to look at it, because I do have it, it does look like a ginormous comic book, while you look through it. Anyway, in reference to the book, Gender Queer, a memoir by Maya Kabe, I would like to use these few minutes to share some thoughts, comments, questions, and concerns about the author. Maya Kabe was a non-binary queer author and illustrator from the Bay Area, California. AIR, I assume that's what she calls herself, E-I-R, first full-length book, Gender Queer, a memoir, was published in May 2019. Maya's short comics have been published by the NIV and in many anthologies, including The Secret Loves of Geeks, Faster Than Light Y'all, Gothic Tales of Haunted Love. The Secret Loves of Geeks, Faster Than Light, Y'all, Gothic Tales of Haunted Love, Shout Out, Advanced Death Saves, and Be Gay, Do Comics. Before settling out to work freelance full-time, E worked for over ten years in libraries. E-I-R, AIR, AIR, worked and he, is heavily influenced by fairy tales, homesickness, and the search for identity. The book is targeted for kids age twelve to eighteen. Please note that the author has said queer kids need queer books. This book is also sold on Amazon, and would like to share a few of the online reviews of the book with you guys. Number one, pornography for kids, absolutely disgusting. This book is not appropriate for kids. Only a seriously confused person would write such a book, signed Julie. Number two, bought this book for my teen, requested, as my teen requested it. I researched it, but couldn't find any content to view. Purchased it, purchased it, and got a disturbing surprise. Very graphic, comic-style book about one person's sexual experiences. I'm forty-nine, it left images I understood, but I did want to see them again. Not recommended. Returned quickly for a refund. I have a few more. So disgusting. If you like porn, then you'll love this book. Stop sexualizing our teens with your pornography. They are children, and children don't need to see these graphic images. Number four, this book is pornography, pure and simple. This book can be found in public libraries in the teen section, which is disgusting. Parents who let their children read this must also be, must also be all right with their kids looking at porn. Immorality being promoted as wokeness. And the last one, the images and language in this book have no place on a bookshelf or anywhere near children, which is the target audience of this book. It shows oral sex, homosexual sex, et cetera. Please do not think this is teaching material. It is attentive for grooming. Now, I and several others have been taking time to reach out to the people in our community about this book. It seems that most of Pella's citizens are unaware that content of this nature is being allowed on the shelves of our public library. Because of this, a group of us has taken it upon ourselves to inform them about the content of this book, whether it's being shown them, reading them, read to them, or by social media. Between the coffee shops, the Bible studies, the neighbors, the friends shopping our stores, it seems that Pella's citizens have always been very good at ensuring information is out there. My experience when showing this book is this, many pause, drop their jaw in disgust, and are speechless. There are also reactions of, this makes me want to vomit. That's pornography. Do kids have access to this? What is our city council doing about this? Isn't Pella better than this? Please don't show me anymore. What is going on in Pella? What has happened to our town? What if this gets into a child's hands? As it should be, this last question seems to be the question of concern of all of our children. Since its author herself said this book is meant for children ages twelve through eighteen, the well-being of our children is a valid concern. One of my conversations yesterday was with a student currently in the second year of her master's degree in mental health counseling. She sees around fifteen children per week, mainly aged ten through thirteen. The children she sees with gender identity issues have often been molested. They in turn form the identity based off of their traumatic experience. For example, she sees a thirteen-year-old female who has been abused by her father. This child now pursues females rather than males because she now hates all men. So essentially, by promoting or providing a book like this to help her guide children with gender identity issues, this book is leaving them in a state of disillusion, which in turn changes them as a person rather than guiding them through their trauma and pain. When this happens, there will be a continuation of lifelong trauma through their, through their gender reassignment, continued confusion, et cetera. Unfortunately, these children still end up unhappy and also suicidal because they're adding another crisis to their trauma, which has not been addressed by anyone in the mental field to help them. The children this individual sees has seen some come from backgrounds, has come from a background of trauma. Kids are very impressionable, so books like this, along with social media, are giving these children a longing to conform and fit in sexually. This is how they are choosing to fit in, and society is saying that's a good thing to do. Whenever she has a client that is struggling with these identity issues, she asks them why if they are choosing to identify as something they are not. More often than not, the most common response is, I don't know. In essence, this book is feeding the trauma and pressures from society to change. I had asked the president of the library board if they had received a professional's opinion on this book and the consequences it may have for the child reading it. There was no response. Pella loves its children. We are proud of our community. I'm sure all of you feel the same. We can no longer sit by and let it be destroyed by confusion. Our children's well-being is a responsibility and concern for all of us. I, along with many other Pella's citizens, many who are in this attendance tonight, are fearing for the safety of our children's well-being. All it takes is for it to get into the hands of a child to destroy their mental health and in turn their livelihood and their future. I've had the privilege to speak with several of our Iowa legislators, such as Senator Ken Rosabom, Senator Jim Carlin, Senator Julian Garrett, Representative John Thorpe, Representative Dean Fisher, and Representative Sandy Salmon. When speaking with them about this book and its subject matter, it is clear that they knew exactly which book I was referring to. I was informed that this book's subject matter has made its way into many conversations at the State House. The president of the Senate, Jake Chapman, refers to this book as obscenity. According to Merriam-Webster, obscenity is a noun that means at the state of quality of being obscene. Obscene behavior, language, or images, filthiness, indecency, solitiousness, smuttiness, immorality, eroticism, nastiness, you get the idea. If you could please see the handout of Iowa Code 2021, Chapter 728, obscenity, under seven twenty-eight that I just handed you? Are you able to see that? And if you look under the definitions of obscene material, you have given, given color copies of the pages of the book to look through, you will see many pictures that fall under that definition of obscene material through those pages. As taxpayers and concerned citizens, we are, we are going to fight on every level with the intent to withhold financial support from the Pella Library as long as books like this are purchased. We are here because we love Pella. If we don't stand up to this book, we will continue to lose the town we love and the feeling of wanting to be here as a safe place to raise our children. We have sought legal counsel and have spoken with an Iowa attorney who has been in practice thirty-eight and a half years. He is both a criminal prosecutor and defense attorney. He works with those who have alleged, who have been alleged crimes and also in someone who prosecutes, is someone who prosecutes. He works with legalities. Providing minors with illegal material, obscenity is a crime. We are not taking this matter lightly. We cannot. We will continue to move forward for the sake of protecting our children. He said, and I quote, "The U.S. Supreme Court has said that obscenity is not protected by the First Amendment to the Constitution. So if this material is deemed obscene, then those distributing it can be held criminally liable." Obscenity is described in Chapter seven twenty-eight point one, under Definitions Number Five, obscene material. It is up to a jury to decide whether this material in question meets Iowa Code seven twenty-eight point one definition. If I were them, he would not want to be the one distributing obscene materials. Are you willing to have this garbage in the library? Whoever is responsible is liable," unquote. So not only is there a criminal side, there's always a moral side. I would like to read from the most trusted and revered book to understand this moral dilemma. It has been repeated twice tonight. It bears a third repeating. Then Jesus called a little one to him. He sent him in the midst of them and said, now at verse six, "But whoever causes one of these little ones to sin, it would be better for him if a millstone were hung around his neck and he were drowned in the depths of the sea. We want to warn them, there is a place far worse than prison." Thank you for your time, and thank you for your work in ensuring that the well-being of Pella's citizens and children will always come first.
I'm Karma Ruthven, three hundred West Fifth Street, here in Pella. I'm standing here before you to be supportive for those against this book being in our public library shelves, for another voice to be heard. I admit I have not looked at this book. I attended the library board meeting. I heard enough trash and filth about this book, and it's very immoral. I would say this person needs some sort of therapy rather than doing this book. Is this an attention seeker? Why would a publisher even publish this? Maybe for money? How can one person request a book in our library? I would think books would need to be evaluated to determine if appropriate to order since it's a request. I am concerned about our children in our community. I have four grandchildren, ages seven to fifteen. I would be applaud, applaud if they got their hands on this book. It is wrong and against my values and beliefs that I've learned living here in Pella for sixty-seven years. Things have been going on in our town, and is this Satan trying to stir things up again? We need to stay strong and sick up for our community and keep Satan out. Remember our Christianity. City Council, please hear our voices of concern. Could this book even have some illegal parts that are against the law? Maybe our city council needs to check into the legality of it. My voice says remove this book altogether from our library or even our town. Give it to the person who ordered it, or maybe they don't even want it at their home. Please think of our children in this community and not of yourself. Stay focused on what each of us are trying to say to you. Thank you.
My name is Lisa Morgan. I live at thirteen forty-four Hazel Street here in Pella. When I was growing up, you had these things that happened in your life, and you, then you just went past you. You grow up, and you go on, you go on. And then I was presented with this book, and I took one look at that, and I immediately flashed back to my childhood. Because I used to go to an aunt and uncle's house where my uncle entertained pornography and Playboy magazines on a regular basis. And I don't want to see that book again. I don't want that book in the hands of my kids, ever. I grew up in southeast Iowa, came here, went to Central, and then I went away to graduate school. When I decided to come back to Iowa, I was very intentional about choosing Pella. Why did I choose Pella? One, because I was pretty career-driven at that point in my life, and I knew I had opportunities here. If I wanted to go to Des Moines, I was close enough to Des Moines. Second, I chose Pella because I believed it was a good place to raise my children, to raise my family, where it was good, it was safe, it had values that I believed in. Now, fast forward, never did I imagine that that family would consist of ten children. Six, no, five and a half, I say. Five and a half are now raised, ones at Central, they only count as half-student, half and Never did I imagine that I would have to protect those children by becoming a solo Never did I imagine that I would now have to work in a court system that doesn't protect the very people that it's supposed to, the children. And as if that isn't enough, now I find myself in the most unimaginable place, having to protect my children from the horrors of a book that is easily accessible in our library, that is very graphic in nature. I have to sign something for my junior high students to take the health class at school, basic health. Yet he could walk into that library and pick up that book and see that graphic feature. Unbelievable that I have to now deal with that as well. And all because I was intentional about choosing the place where I would raise my children. I've often said that it's much more challenging raising my younger crew than it was my older crew, not because I'm doing it alone, but because of the technology that I have to deal with, with the younger crew. And now, I have to add one more thing to my plate. The very town that I am raising my family will not protect them from pornography. Do you see a problem? Because I do.
I'm Pam Moldy, sixteen twenty-four Briar Lane, Pella. And so I just wanted to share a few things, perhaps, that the board would want to know. And I thank you so much for giving us this opportunity tonight to listen to our concerns here. And like so many of them, I agree, I have kids, and I don't want them to see this book at the library. If you think about the Casey's that's right next door to the library, if that Casey's decided to carry a Playboy magazine, they couldn't just leave it out on the shelf, right? Because it's against Code seven twenty-eight, because anybody could walk in and open it up, and a child could see that, and then they would be charged with a crime. But the very library right next door can have the very same magazine for anybody to come in and open up. A child goes into the adult section, that child could open it up. So I find that to be a problem. Now, I didn't know if possibly the board knew this, but this book has been, many school boards have had parents come and express their concerns, and many of those school boards are banning that book from their school. Ankeny Schools has just done that this month, as one of them. So I was, like many of the people here, I was at the library board in the last meeting because I wanted my voice to be heard. And one thing I don't quite understand, that I'm hoping the board can help me understand, is there is a library board in our town, but what can the average citizen like myself do? How can you even get on the library board? I don't know the answer to this. From what I hear, trying to understand it, it sounds like the library board itself gets to decide who they elect, which that kind of seems like a problem to me, because if they, didn't seem like they listened to our concerns, and all of them sided the other way, what can the average citizen do like us? And so again, I thank you for listening to our concerns on this. So one of the things that I have done is I have also contracted, contacted representative height, I've contacted Representative Sandy Salmon, and also Senator Rosenbaum, and I've heard back from them. And they told me to start with the library board, which we've done. And now I said, okay, that didn't go so well. And so they said the next step is our city council. So that's why we're here today, to see if you guys can do something to stop this. At the very, at the very least, if, we would want the book not to be on the shelves where our kids can just walk in and grab it. It should be behind the counter. Ideally, we would not want the book at all in our library. Now, if we go back real quick to Iowa Code seven twenty-eight that was mentioned, which is the code that prevents Casey's from having a Playboy magazine sitting out. That code, I don't know if you knew it, but it exempts school libraries and it exempts libraries. And that's why legally right now, we can't go after the library based on that. And that's what I have heard from the lawmakers. Now, one of them has tried proposing a bill, and they don't have the bill number in front of me, but she tried proposing it last session, and it didn't get out of committee. Now, she's going to try proposing that again this year, but there's no guarantee that that is going to be enacted where it would make it illegal for the library to do anything. So we really need the city council to really help us out and see what can do, you can do, to prevent our kids from seeing this book. So thank you very much for listening.
Mike, perhaps she has a question about the library board. Perhaps you can explain how the board is selected. I think I know, but I'll leave it to you to...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have a slide on this, but the library, it's spelled out under City Code, Chapter 22. Members of the board are appointed, are recommended by the mayor, and they're voted on by the city council on that as well. It is important, now, we have a few other things to point at discussion, but it's responsible for developing all affairs within the library, as well as all policies within the library, including the circulation policy. So to answer your question, Mr. Mayor, they are appointed by, recommended by the mayor, appointed by the Pella City Council.
And Mike, couldn't they also attend a library board meeting, recognize the fact when terms expire, and then verbally say in the meeting, "I'd like to be considered for a position on the library board," and like any meeting, it then becomes a matter of public record? So if they would just, if they would attend a library board meeting, and they would stand up, I'm not going to do it, but let's say I'm not on city council, I'm a citizen, and I stand up and I say, "I understand Joanne Smith's term ends July 1st, 2022. I would like to be considered for the board." Then the notes from the library board meeting would have that in their documentation, and then those notes become a matter of public record, or a matter of record, so that when these terms expire, that can be referenced as a formalized matter of public record. Just going about it in a different direction.
And when it has a matter of perspective, one of this guy's most difficult tasks is all of the boards and committees. He has to come up with people who are willing and able to serve. And if you are one of those willing and able, speak up.
I did.
So I was, I was trying to get that question answered. I thought, I actually can appoint, and the council approves. Does anybody else want to speak? Because I do have something I want to say, but I will respectfully wait until everyone has had an opportunity to speak. Okay, so first of all, thank you for coming. Thank you for talking to us, telling us how you feel. I can assure you, we heard you, we listened to you, we understand. And I also want to, there's three people in this room that actually came to my office to have a conversation about that. I appreciate that. I appreciate the opportunity to do that. Both, both those conversations were very respectful, and we had a really good discussion about it. And I certainly was conveyed to me the heart of the people that were there, so I do appreciate that. And I want you all to know, it's been my policy since I've been elected mayor, that whenever a citizen wants to talk to me, I will make the time to talk to you face-to-face about any issue you want to talk about. And I know I opened myself up to a lot of discussions, and I've had a lot, but that's part of my job, so I'll do that. So what I want to say is, when I was elected mayor, how the, how the library operated was not something that I delved into. You know, I had, didn't really have any reason to, and I think, Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this is the first time a book has been challenged in this way.
I believe you are, at least during my tenure, Mr. Mayor.
So the thing, if you see up there, there's some policy originally adopted in two thousand about purchasing. So this policy, the purchase policy's been in place for twenty, twenty-one years now. I say this is the first time that, that a book has been challenged. And so this is the first time that the system that was adopted, however, not, maybe it was, because there is a set of procedures in place when people want to challenge a book, and you guys did it the right way, filed your, well, I don't know if I want to call it a complaint, whatever your concern, let's call it a concern, you filed your concern properly. You were given an audience with the board of the library. I wasn't at the meeting, so I know that, I believe, Mandy told me twenty-eight people spoke at that meeting. I did listen to some of the audio. Anyway, so that procedure was followed, the board made a decision, and so now we're here, unsatisfactory to a lot of you, their decision. So here's what I plan on doing, and just so you know, and I think it'll address Keith, this will address your question. So I need to be educated on the procedures and the policies and the system that's in place of how our, how our library, because I just, I've learned a lot, but I don't know everything. I would say if I'd asked these guys, they probably are in the same boat. So what I'm planning is, at our, on our, at our January four meeting, we will have a policy and planning session, and for those of you that come to council meetings, policy and planning sessions are more of an informal discussion amongst ourselves. We don't make any decisions there. We have an informal discussion. And the result of those is for us to give instruction to staff if we want to make, if we want to do something to make a decision. So the purpose of this policy and planning session will be to get a very thorough explanation of how the system works with our library, how books are bought, and all of those things, we will do that. We will have discussion among ourselves. I think, and I haven't asked Mike this yet, but I think if we so choose as a council, we could change the system. We have the authority to do that. Right now, the way it works, the board, the library board works pretty autonomously, and they are in charge of running the board, or running the library. As you've mentioned, we approve funding for the library, and I appoint members of the board of the library. That's kind of our role in this whole thing. So January four, we will have a policy and planning meeting. We'll get a real, if you've ever been to our meetings, you know Mike is very thorough in how he goes through things. We will get a very thorough explanation of how the system works, so that we all are as formed as we can be, and then we will decide, council will decide if we, if and what we want to move forward with, if we want to make any changes. And then we will instruct staff to do that, get that prepared, and then at a later meeting, we would vote to adopt those changes. So that's, so you know, that's where we're going with this. So, do you have a question?
Yeah. How long are the people on the library board? Do they have a term?
They do have terms, what, is it three years? Three years? We have, we have some three and some five-year terms of different committees, but this one is three years.
So since you are the one that is involved with picking the library board, how do you, how do the names come to you?
Well, I think you can go online at the city and fill out an application if you'd like to be considered for a board. You can do it that way. You can tell me if you'd like to do it that way. We have a lot of commissions, a lot of boards, and so some of, some of it, you know, let's say the historical trust. I'm not a historian, and so if there are a vacancy on that board, I will reach out to the current board members and say, you know, is there somebody? If a board member doesn't want to be reappointed, I will reach out to them and say, hey, do you have a name of somebody that you think would be good on this board? They would give that name. I would pass it to Mandy. She would contact that person. We always have to find out if they're willing first, and then... So there's a list, there's a list of all of the, all of the boards and committees that we have, and it's the mayor's responsibility to fill those seats when they, when they come available or come up for, whether it's a ready or done with a reappointment or appointing someone new. And so, you know, some of them I, I mean, I have people that I feel will be good on in particular, so I will appoint that person. But that's the process. And anyone that wants to volunteer, there's some rules about, you have to be a citizen of Pella. Some of them, there's other, you can expand beyond being in the city limits. So yes, that's how you do it.
Based on the nature of the concern of the book, is it possible that it could be made withheld while it's being reviewed?
I think, yes, I think we can easily make that decision after our policy meeting on the fourth. So I want to, I want to, this is important, important stuff, and I want to make sure we understand, we understand we do it right if we're going to do it. And I'm not making any promises of what's going to come out of this, just saying I want to make sure we all, this group, understands the process and what we can, what we can't do. It's really important that if we're going to address it, we do it in the right way.
What are the guidelines that are being used on what you can decide what can and can't be done? How do you define that?
As far as what our involvement with the...
Yeah, let's just keep it with the, the subject matter of this book.
The library board.
Yeah, the library board.
And again, they, they operate pretty autonomously. They have control of the library. They make the decisions for the library under the current system, and Mike, you can fill in, because you know it better than I do. We, we have two roles. One is the funding, and two is my appointing the board. At this point, if we want it to be different, then we have to change that system. And we, I assume we would have the authority to change that system if we so choose. I'm making some assumptions, because I don't, again, I need some education too. But that's the plan, is to get as informed and educated as possible.
Something one has to keep in mind is that you have a body of six people that are sincere and do their due diligence and everything, and we're always pulling the rug out from under them and turning around their decisions or disregarding them. They're not going to serve very long. You have to honor people and the effort that they put in, the responsibility they agreed to fill.
As do all the council members who are voted by the city of Pella.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
You may.
Thank you. Just for worst-case scenario for a second. What, what would be the process if, let's say, after, after the meeting comes back and we are not at all pleased with the decision of council? And let's say the, the town people represented here wanted to move to have maybe the board member from the library removed, fired? How do we go about that?
I have no idea. Mike may know. I don't know what the process is.
Mayor, I would suggest we will cover those topics on January four.
I don't want to, I don't want to get into speculative discussion, but that'll all be part of it, I'm sure. I say I anticipate and put a lot of work on our staff, but I want it to be very thorough, so that we all understand the process and how it works, what we can do.
Thank you. Yes?
Does the library committee keep minutes of their meetings?
Yep.
And are they reviewed by you when they're...
Yep.
In the last meeting or when these people were there, did they mention anything about the displeasure of having that book in there?
I don't think the minutes are out there yet. Takes a little time for Mandy to compile all that.
The minutes are then submitted at the next meeting, and voted on by the board. And then afterwards, they're updated on their website, so there's a little bit of a reminder.
They, they approve their own minutes at their next meeting, which is typically done. And once that happens, then it becomes public record, and we, we get it in our, all of the minutes, we get all of our minutes, of all of our board meetings, we get those after they approve them. Okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, sorry, sorry.
I felt like you were heard tonight, and I want to thank you for that. When the library was here, it was totally different response from those chairs. And thank you for sharing your thoughts. It was real helpful. Thank you.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Manfred Hopkins, all the fairer please say yes, close no. Mandy, please call roll.
The answer?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Kim?
Yep.
Ray or Horace?
Yes.